I believe we are live now. I can double check. All right, we are live, we are good to go. Sorry for the delay, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Ally. So, we're calling the meeting.
Thank you, Jason with IT.
Okay, calling the meeting tomorrow. Julian, can you show the flag? You have one there? Let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ally, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So can you please read in the certification of compliance?
Yes. The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board at the office of the Township of Lakewood at least 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes. This meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Ally. Roll call.
Mr. Garfield. I'm sorry, hold on, I probably muted everyone. I have to stop sharing my screen.
Yeah, everybody's muted.
Mr. Garfield for attendance.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable. I have him muted as well, hold on. Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Flansbrough, looks like maybe he's having connection issues.
He looks like he's muted.
I know, and I'm trying to unmute him and it's not working, but it's... Oh, there we go, no, it won't stick. I'm gonna skip him for now, he may be having connection issues. I'm seeing a little yellow error message on the top of his screen. Mr. Herzl.
Here, do we have a call without him?
Yes, Mr. Renner.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer, and Mr. Raisin. So we do have five without Mr. Flansbrough who may just have been having some connection issues, but is working on it.
This is Justin, please try to log in again. We'd like to have you on. Okay, swearing in of professionals. Julian, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Herzl. If the professionals would please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a minute. Okay. Okay, on to the public hearing.
Yes. Just so everyone is aware, we do have two applications that were tabled from tonight. They are not being heard. That is application SP 2180 for Congregation Somerset Walk as well as SP 2374 for Congregation Tolo's Yakov Yosef. Both of those are being tabled to a future meeting date and new public notice will be provided for those. So the only item the board is considering tonight is SP 2370AA made by Tuvea Steinharter. It's a change of use site plan exemption to convert a house at 82 Erica Road to a school.
Okay. So Terry, are you available?
Yes, I am. I can summarize the letter, Chairman.
Yeah, please.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Flansbrough is here.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. I'm reading from page two of my May 18th letter. This is a change of use site plan exemption. Under Roman numeral one, you have various submission waivers, plant design signature block, setback lines, et cetera. And design waivers based on existing conditions, which is what's currently proposed, include bus drop off picking area, pickup area, shade tree utilities, landscaping, landscaping, trash and recyclable storage, and proposed grading. Continuing on page three under zoning. As per comment one, it's a permitted use. Comments two through four, these are pre-existing setback variance conditions with the existing structure, which will have to be reaffirmed with the change of use. The design waivers include shade tree utilities, shade trees, lighting, landscaping, and paid parking as well as from curving and sidewalk along the Erica Road frontage of the property.
Okay. We have to vote on any waivers? They're only design waivers, right? Terry?
Correct.
On top, do we have to vote on anything right now? Any release?
Mr. Herzl, the board can vote on this right now or if you'd like, you can listen to the testimony and then we can deal with that later on.
Okay, no problem.
What you may want to do, Chairman, is hear the application first. If the board desires site improvements, then obviously that'll be modified based upon what the applicant has to do.
Thank you. Terry, are you finished with your report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. Who is the applicant? Brian, is that you?
Mr. Chairman, shall I swear Brian Flannery in?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As indicated, this is an application to change the use.
Excuse me for one moment, Mr. Flannery. I just want to confirm, Mr. Herzl, that the board accepts Mr. Flannery's certifications?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you very much. You can proceed, Mr. Flannery.
Okay.
Looks vaguely familiar.
Ally, could you bring the plan up on the screen? You don't have it. Hey, thank you, Ally. Okay, Brian, please proceed.
Yeah, so this is a 75-foot-by-300-foot deep lot that's got an existing one-story dwelling on it as shown on the change-of-use plan. The plan is to utilize the six parking spaces that are already available. The ordinance requires for the three classrooms and the one office, four spaces, and we provided six. The... This is a, as indicated in Terry's letter, it's a school that currently has 37 students. They're expecting 57 students for next year, which is what this application is hoping to accomplish, that this school will be able to open up in September. It's a boys' school. The last year, they had primary and first grade. They're planning on primary, first, and second grade this year. They have, as indicated, four vans that'll be dropping the children off. They will stagger the vans so that only two come at a time. They have three staff. If you look at the parking configuration, there are six double-stacked parking spaces. So the staff would come in. That leaves three parking spaces available for the vans for dropping off. We have two vans coming and they're staggered. There's an extra space if apparent or for the one carpool that may come in at different times.
Brian, the vans are gonna come, they have to back out.
Yes. And if you're familiar with Eric Road, it's a residential street. It very... The density is very low and backing out of there is the same that the residents have been doing, backing out of those driveways.
What is in between the right side parking and the left side, the four and the two? What's that section in between?
It's not... It's landscaped.
Landscaped?
Obviously, we're looking at a school that's starting. It had two classes this year, it's gonna have three next year. They intend to do something more permanent with the site, but they're asking for this change of use for next year so that the school can open and grow.
My question, you can make a turnaround. I'm not in favor of vans backing... Dropping off kids and they have three vans backing out into each other.
The... Yes. The applicant would be able to, as a condition of approval, make a turnaround, a gravel turnaround so that the vans would be able to turn around.
Okay, you have enough room over there.
Yes, there is plenty of room to accommodate that. So going through the report, as Terry indicates, on page three on zoning, item one, it is a permitted use. Item two, the accessory side setback, 2.6 feet, is an existing condition to the shed that's already on the property. The perimeter buffer relief, again, is an existing condition. And the relief for the proposed parking being within five feet of the property is another existing condition.
So if you don't mind, Brian, this is Ally. On these variances you just listed, zoning variances, would they be a zoning variance whether it's a residential structure there on this footprint or a school structure? The same setback requirement?
The buffer and the parking setback are for schools. So as a residential, it's not a variance.
So currently, this structure stands, if it stands as a residential structure, there is no variance?
Other than for the shed.
Other than for the shed.
Right.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just clarifying that. The variances that we have listed under bulk variances under zoning are pre-existing setbacks with the resident with the resident building itself. We're asking that they be reaffirmed because the application is to change the use of the property from residential to school.
What's on this?
One second, can I just finish with my thought over here?
Yeah, Mr. Renner.
So just continue after what Terry just said. So if this stays... If a new residential structure would be built on this footprint, would these variances be required?
If it was built in the same exact location, yes. The bulk variances would be required. The buffer and the parking, as Brian indicated, I believe are related to the proposed change of use. Is that correct, Brian?
That's correct.
Right. Terry, when you say the bulk variance, you mean the setback for the shed? I believe that's the only bulk variance, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was for the building itself. I apologize.
So forgetting about the shed for a second, just the building itself, am I looking at variances for residents also? If it's state of residence?
No.
The main building appears to conform. I apologize. The one setback variance is with the shed.
The residence as it is appears to conform. So what it says in our letter that this is an existing condition, it doesn't mean that it's an existing variance. It just means that it's an existing condition.
Well, yeah. The accessory setback is an existing condition. That's correct.
Honestly, Mr. Renner, a school is legal in a vison, so technically, it's an existing condition if you would build a school.
That's not what I'm asking. You see, numbers two, three, and... Let's be silent for the accessory use. I'm not concerned about that accessory. So for number three and four, three and four, the variances three and four, that would not be a variance if it would stay a house?
That is correct. And my testimony... Yes, that is correct. And my testimony, as I was gonna continue, would indicate that it's not a variance situation for the dwelling. As a residence, you don't have those buffer requirements. But as a school, you have the buffer requirements and the parking is there and everything that's infringing on the buffer is already there. So as far as the neighbors coming home and finding something different than what is there today, the only thing they're gonna find different is it's a school for three classrooms and vehicles will be parking within five feet of their property line, the same as they are today. So when I get to the justification for the relief and when you look at that section of the ordinance, it is in section nine, which makes it potentially a variance rather than a waiver. But the language of it, to the extent says that buffering should be provided to the satisfaction of the board and other places in the ordinance, it indicates that buffering is required when there's insufficient separation between uses and when the board determines that buffering is needed. So if the board determined that something different was needed here, the applicant would certainly provide fencing or some kind of landscaping that would satisfy the intent of the ordinance. My professional opinion is that the low intensity of this school that we're talking about, there's no adverse impact on the neighbors. And obviously, since they were all noticed and they get an opportunity email, if they feel differently, they will let you know. But the 20-foot buffer is the same thing for a three-story, 40-classroom building as it is for a three-classroom building. So that's why, in my professional opinion, these variances are warranted. Further with respect to the variances, if you look at the...
Brian, how long are you going for this building? It's temporary? You're going for a full site plan on a regular-sized building? On three classrooms, you can't use it too long?
For three classrooms, we can only use it next year. Now, the school is investigating what's the appropriate way to do it. Obviously, something additional has to happen here, at which time the parking would be addressed, buffering would be addressed. All those items would be addressed. We're asking just to approve these three classrooms. We're not asking to put anything more than that. By next year, when a fourth classroom is needed, the school will have to determine the appropriate way to do that. And if the board acts favorably on this application tonight, they'll have a year to figure out what they want to do for next year.
It's my question.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
How old is this student, Brian?
It's primary, first grade, and second grade.
Primary, first grade, and second grade, okay. Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion, Chairman, is that... Whenever there's a change of use in the residential neighborhood, we should automatically require at least a six-foot vinyl fence and some landscaping. It's an automatic requirement, in my opinion.
Okay, no problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dave?
Yes. A question. I'm looking at the traffic study. It's item seven. And it says here, this study was made for 750 students. And with the proposed number of buses being...
That's all... You're looking at the traffic study, I think, from Congregation Tolo's Yakov Yosef on Squankam.
Yeah, I think you're looking at the wrong guy, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that one was 750.
There's no traffic study associated with this.
I don't see it as 750 on this.
Can I just go back to where I started with my comment, if you don't mind? And this is more of a comment to Remington than that happened, if you don't mind, Terry. When you write in the letter, "This is an existing condition, this is an existing condition, this is an existing condition," after the zoning variance, leads me to believe that it's already... You know, if everything stayed the way it is, we already have this variance.
Yeah.
And that's not what you were trying to say over here. You were just writing that it's an existing condition.
No.
That we need to give. Could we be more... Could you be a little more specific in the future, when you write these letters, that, you know, it's an existing condition which under current circumstances are not... Don't cause a variance, but based on the proposed use, it will cause a variance?
Yeah. We should have been clear, Ally, clearly, and I apologize. What we were trying to say in comments three and four is that there are no study improvements. What you see out there with respect to the perimeter buffer and parking is what is out there now.
And I get that.
It's pre-existing. And that's something we'll have to be clear going forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Terry, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Could this school grow, not going back to the board, but just adding trailers in the back of the building and have 10 classrooms there with the same amount of parking? What trick is that they have to come back to a board?
That's a good question, Chairman. I do not know the answer. I know that the zoning officer has certain powers under the UDO to allow temporary trailers. I don't know if she looks at parking or not as part of any temporary approvals. It's a big...
My experience with the zoning officer is you need a site plan approval first and then she does look at the parking to make sure that the parking is provided. That's been the experience on plans that I've been involved with.
So basically, you'd be able to put up a few trailers over here 'cause you have excess parking?
Well, I don't know how we would get the trailers onto the site without knocking the building down. And it's not...
I can tell you how. The same owner owns 76 Erica as well, so they can go in from there.
You do have 19 feet. I don't know how wide a trailer is. You have room to come in. So Brian, that's why I asked you the question. If you're coming to us for a change of use for a year or two and you're coming back with plans within two years, I don't have an issue with it. I don't want... This should become, for the next 10 years, a temporary school without coming back to the board, without having the parking. I don't know how other members feel.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Ally?
Mr. Chairman, just to interject really quick, you know, we can certainly... The board can impose, you know, conditions if the board is concerned about something like that. You know, that can certainly... We can discuss that.
I would look on it as a change of use for two, three years and they have to come back to the board within two, three years or the parking, whatever the...
You can't do that. You're here, once you give a change of use, they're allowed to build. They have that use. You can't give a change of use for a specific time.
Well, the change of use only applies to this residential structure changing from a house to a school. And I think it was like seven years ago when there were some people that abused the change of use, at which time the township said, "It used to be, you just changed the use." You went to the zoning officer, you said, "We're changing, it's a permitted use," and everything was done. So I'm old, so I forget how many years ago it occurred. Ally, who's much younger and has a better memory than me, probably would remember it better. But at that point, they said, "No, some of the schools have abused this." And they made it, "If you have a school, you have to come and you have to notify your neighbors so the neighbors don't get surprised and have a bad situation occurring in their neighborhood." So my discussions with the applicant is what Mr. Herzl was indicating. It is that this is for a year, maybe two at the most, till they figure out what they do and come back. I don't remember this situation coming up in the past and perhaps it's something, I don't know, that somebody did abuse the... How Lakewood is friendly toward the private schools and tries to help the private schools out and maybe that's where that's coming from. But I think Julian has indicated that the board could put restrictions that they feel are needed in order to protect it from being a school with trailers in the backyard forever.
So would the applicant agree to, if they ever do put up any trailers or make any additions to this building at all, to come back in front of this board?
I...
I'm shaking my head, yes.
Yes. On behalf of the applicant, I'm saying yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would that mean that no trailers would come in at the time of these three classes going up?
I mean, there would be no trailers... There would be no trailers here without permission from this board?
Okay.
Correct. That means that all that's being approved by this board is the three classrooms that are shown on the plan that was submitted. And anything else needs to come back to this board for approval.
Julian, is that okay?
My last question, it may sound silly.
Definitely.
No trailer can come in for classrooms, but what about or office space? You know, they may say they need office space and bring a trailer in.
Yes, any additional structures? They're agreeing that any additional structures or additions to this building, they're gonna come back in front of this?
Okay. Thank you.
And to answer your question, Mr. Herzl, I think that's certainly a fine condition. I've written it down here. I'll make sure that gets into the resolution, assuming there's an approval.
Okay. Thank you. But technically, they have to come back to the board because after two, three years, they're gonna outgrow this building or they're gonna get something else or they're gonna put trailers and they have to come back to the board.
Yes.
Brian, you agree to that?
Yes.
That's a condition of approval. Okay. Anything else, Brian, do you have on this?
All right, so I just wanted to go through the master plan of 2017. Under the vision statement says, "Encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles." And it's my testimony that this accomplishes that under page 10 of the same 2007 master plan under community facility strategies. It says, "Continue to support the development of private schools in the township of Lakewood." And obviously, we all understand where that's coming from. With respect to the relief that's requested, the municipal land use law, NJAC 40:55D2, under the purpose of the act, "Aid's encouragement of action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estates in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare." And providing the school place certainly provides that general welfare to the extent that variances are needed because what we're talking about with reference to bulk variances is shed which is existing and maybe doesn't need it. And the buffer relief, which in my interpretation, the buffer relief is more of a design waiver than a variance, but it's kind of a gray area. If it was a variance, it's certainly a C2 variance where we need to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. And I think this piece of property that's 22,000 square feet in an R12A zone is certainly appropriate. It's particularly well-suited for the school. The purposes of the municipal land use law, I've already indicated. It's my opinion, the variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good. The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance because it complies with the master plan and the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment. With respect to the design waivers, we're asking for a gravel driveway to remain and that's for two reasons. One, environmentally, the gravel provides for some stormwater recharge, so it's not gonna change the stormwater flow in the area. And it's for a short period of time, as Mr. Herzl indicated. We're gonna be back to the board with this within a couple-year period. And when we come back, there'll be changes and anything that we put in, any improvements that we put in would, you know, just be money that was wasted. And for a start school that's starting up like this, it's my opinion that it would be appropriate to allow a situation like this. As indicated in Terry's report, he talks about the parking and the ordinance requires. And we have four, we have six. We've indicated as a condition of approval that we have four, we have six, we've indicated as a condition of approval that we would provide a gravel turnaround area so that the vans do not have to back out. I don't think there was anything additional that needed to be addressed.
How about this one?
I didn't hear any conversation on curbs and sidewalks.
That's where I was going, Ali. Are you still seeking the waiver on curving and sidewalk along the frontage?
We are seeking the waiver on curving and sidewalk on the frontage because we will be back within a year or two, at which time we'll be doing a real plan for a real school rather than a conversion. And at that time, certainly, we would put in the curbs and sidewalks because we would know where they're going to go and they wouldn't be disturbed. So we're asking respectfully for that waiver for a startup school to help them for next year.
What's with the garbage?
The garbage will be in a rollout container picked up by DPW, the same as it was for the house.
Okay, and is this whole property fenced in?
The plan does show an existing fence around the entire property.
I think a condition that we need a decent fence, especially when you have young kids not going or running.
Yes, we would agree that the fence needs to be in suitable condition subject to the determination of the township engineer.
It looks like one side for the record is labeled as stockade fence, the other side is labeled as chain link and they don't appear to connect.
That's correct. There's a gap that begins at the, I guess it would be the west side of the shed.
We would agree as a condition of approval to add fences needed to make it safe and proper per the determination of the township engineer.
All right, so we don't know at this point what's out there. Is that four foot high, six foot high? Do you know, Brian?
I don't know and I think for the ages of the kids we're talking about, whether it's four or six, that would be sufficient. And I think the engineer's office could inspect it. The applicant will certainly submit photos and a report to the engineer as part of resolution compliance indicating our opinion on what needs to be done and we would defer to R V E for either their concurrence or whatever they feel needed to be done.
Thank you.
What's the harm, Mr. Finery, in putting in curbs and sidewalks at this point?
When we come in with the other plan, those curbs and sidewalks will be trashed. And so we're wasting the money. They're not going to accomplish anything for the year or two time because there's no other sidewalk in the neighborhood and they'll change the drainage pattern.
What about putting a meandering path from the asphalt?
I think that would be a very good compromise.
Mr. Renner, what do you think about that?
Chairman, if I may chime in?
Yeah, Mr. Sable.
Okay, so I think the board has to look at it a little different. The reason is because the next, the building next door is owned by the same owner and it's very possible that in two, three, Brian is saying that we're coming back to the board in two years, three years from now. We don't know and the reason why we can think that it's not coming back so quickly because they can use the next door for additional three classrooms, so they can have six classrooms over there before they stop building anything. Therefore, the three items that we discussed, which is trailers and a driveway and sidewalk, has to be looked at as six classrooms as a bigger school and not coming back so quick. That's my main point.
The only thing I'd like to respond to that is there'll be no trailers because we have agreed as a condition of approval that there are no trailers. The only thing that gets to be used for a school is the existing building. And if they wanted to do something on the adjoining lot, they would have to come back to this board for a change of use. At that point, the board could say, all right, you got two buildings. You had time to figure out what you wanted to do, put in the curb and the sidewalk.
Brian, I want to respond to that. That's okay. That makes sense and it's comforting to know that. But the question is, if the zoning officer agrees to that, that we're going to have to come back. I don't know if we've ever had a case like that where we had to come back.
If there's a condition in the, if there's a condition in the resolution that says you have to, then you have to. And I know Fran does look at the resolutions.
Correct. And I hope the zoning officer will look at it. If we can get an input from her, she deals with these trailers every single day and she gives them easily, rather easily than not, which is a good thing. But if we can get an input from her, knowing that trailers is going to be based on our condition of approval, that will comfort us. It's still not going to help with the sidewalk and pavement, but at least the trailers, we know we're not getting.
Well, we would be happy to, as a condition of approval, send a letter to the zoning officer, Fran Siegel, with the resolution pointing out to her that this is a condition that was imposed so that if someone were to ask for trailers on this site, it would be inappropriate to grant them.
And can we request from her to acknowledge it and to say that she's not going to give any trailer approvals?
I never commit to making Fran work because I'm not her boss, so.
But you understand the concern. The concern is we're going to have six or seven classrooms. And it is a big property and there is structures and we need to have a school there. I have no, you know, it is what it is, but sidewalk and pavement and trailers.
Mr. Sable, I think the resolution should say that we're restricting it strictly for three classrooms up to sixty kids, twenty per classroom.
Yeah. I give it the twenty per classroom.
Maybe twenty. That's a standard classroom, no? I mean, I think Brian testified that it would be fifty-seven.
Yes, the applicant is figuring on a maximum of twenty-nine per classroom.
Twenty-nine? And on three classrooms, so you
Fifty-seven.
What?
Fifty-seven students rather than sixty.
How many classrooms are you going to have?
Three.
Twenty-nine times three is one, it's seven.
I think it's much better for this board to regulate.
Nineteen, excuse me, nineteen.
I think it's better for the It says, it says three classroom, one classroom is seven occupants, the other one is fifteen and the other one is twelve. That's the floor plan that we have, a total of twenty-something, thirty, thirty-seven kids.
I know there was a operation statement that was submitted that said fifty-seven for next year.
The plan that we have shows thirty-seven.
Brian, no, Ali, leave it on there, please. The proposed classroom I see is one to the left, my left, is a hundred fifty square feet. Are you going to put nineteen kids in a hundred fifty square feet? I hope not.
Who's going to stop them if you don't stop them?
They're very small rooms and they, one, two, fifty, twelve.
Brian's probably getting a call from the applicant. In the meantime, though, I want to pull up that document he referenced just because I didn't have it open for the board. There may have been a statement of operations that I missed, but I'm not seeing it here actually, so. So I don't have whatever he's referencing.
Why is it listed, the amount of occupants on the plan? Is this because there's a code that they're conforming to?
That most likely. Typically, when that's listed on architectural plans, yes, it's a code issue about square footage.
Okay, Ali, Mr. Renner, like I just said before, we have a hundred and fifty square feet on the, on the on the left classroom, the left top, to my left top. You can't put in more than the, I don't know, ten kids in there? I don't know, twenty? You can't put twenty kids in there. Hundred and fifty is, it's about eleven, eleven by eleven, twelve, twelve by twelve. That's what it is. Small room.
So let's find out the plan. Good point.
Terry? How many kids could you put in the classroom, a hundred and fifty square feet, you know?
I do not know, but I would assume that when they go to get building permits, they're going to be regulated in part by the allowed occupancy by the building code official. To answer the earlier question where the fifty-seven students came from, we have received a brief operation statement from NextGen, early April, I believe, which simply said thirty-seven students this year and fifty-seven students next year. But again, if the board were to approve it and they go to the building official, the building official may say you can only have an occupancy of twenty-five people in the whole building for occupancy.
Okay.
Your letter says thirty-seven and the plan that they show us is thirty-four.
Yeah, what we, what we have, like I said, we had received a revised submission with a cover letter that I think Ali just found it.
They're intent
That's where the information came from.
So I can clarify that. I think the fifty-seven is going to be the next door building adjacent.
No, there's a letter here that says, it's up on the screen, thirty-seven current, fifty-seven next year.
Exactly. So how are they going to accomplish fifty-seven next year? If they're going to use the building next door, which is fine, the department approves it. But means, we board members, we have to take that in consideration when we give them, if we give them anything for sidewalks or pavement and so forth.
There's only one floor to this building, right, Ali?
Correct. Well, there's a basement, it says, for storage.
One is a crawl space and that's
It's a partial basement.
It's a partial basement with a hot water heater and a furnace. I'm not even sure how
So my first question is, Terry, you explain to the board, how are you getting fifty-seven people in the building?
If I could interrupt, there have been a lot of questions that we don't have answers for. So we would like to carry this application and get the answers and come back when we've heard the board's concerns. We can come back with something that will make the board comfortable and will answer the many questions they have.
Okay, good to meet you.
I recommend before sending them away that we at least hear the public comments I received, which were quite vocal.
I agree with that, Ali.
The applicant would appreciate that as well.
Okay, Ali, give me one second, please.
Sure.
Are there any board members who have any other concerns before we go to the public?
My concern is that the area is probably the least best area in Lakewood so far because of crime. I live in the area, I know what's going on. But the zoning allows it, so not much we could do. We can just suggest and beg them not to make it here until it becomes safer. But the applicant is allowed to do it.
Okay, so I think saying that, if that is correct, I don't know the area, I strongly suggest that we have a decent fence going around the whole property, that it should be safe for the kids.
Well, let's hear from, let's hear from the neighbors. I mean, let's hear from the people, what they want in the neighborhood. We hear a lot of concerns and we hear that there's public testimony.
Okay, I just want to be on the record if any board members had any other questions, but
You can make it, you can make it a fence around properly if you want to use the parking there.
Okay, Ali, we'll turn to you, please.
I want to start with, I received a voicemail yesterday from a Ms. Burdick at eighty-eight Erica. She is down the street and to the west, five houses down. No, I'm sorry, that's another commenter. Eighty-eight Erica is directly next door to this property. Unfortunately, she left me a voicemail and I could not hear her phone number to return her call, but she was in opposition to the application. I believe per another neighbor, she's an older, an older woman and she was having internet problems in viewing the plans online, but she was objecting to the application. I did receive three comments via email. I will share my screen so I can show those now as well. And I also have, so I believe the woman who left me a voicemail is right next door here.
That's true.
Then I received this first email from Dennis Boye and he had some specific questions. I have this up on the screen. Should I read this, Jillian?
If there's any concern, please.
I think to be on the safe side, we should, we should read it, Ali.
Okay, no problem.
Could you, Anja, Darby?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. From Cynthia and Dennis Boye at ninety-five Lucy Road, which is one block behind this property. I'm not sure which house in particular, but it's one block behind. And their comment is, this is a residential area that is very congested with buses in the morning and afternoon. There are no sidewalks for the children to walk on. A school would create even more traffic. That being said, we are not against a school that would benefit the children in our neighborhood. If the school will not benefit our children, it should be located in the prospective student's neighborhood so they can walk to school and not create more traffic. Then they have questions. One, is the school going to be elementary, middle, high school or post-secondary? Two, is the school going to benefit the children in our neighborhood? Three, the preliminary architectural plan shows room for thirty-four students. The documents state there will be thirty-seven students the first year and fifty-seven students the second year. How is this small home going to accommodate fifty-seven students plus staff? What about parking and transportation? Four, is the system able to handle fifty-seven students plus staff? In addition to hand washing and toileting, will meals be prepared? Five, this property, eighty-two Erica Road, was bought in conjunction with seventy-six Erica Road, the house next door, by Heskel Steinharter, who owns an adult care center. NextGen Land Development is a commercial building company. Therefore, we would like to know what the long-term plans are for these two properties. Are they going to be combined into one? Our twelve A zones are residential, including schools, and only allow twenty-five percent of the property to be developed. Is a variance in the future plan, submitted by Cynthia and Dennis Boye. I will read the next, this came in two parts, from a Lori, I'm sorry, I'm going to get her name wrong, Zabowski. She says, to whom it may concern, I was literally just informed by my neighbor that there are plans to put a school at eighty-two Erica Road. I find it very interesting that I did not receive a certified letter letting me know about this board meeting and that they plan on putting a school there. As a homeowner on this block, I do have a right to know. I will contact my lawyer in reference to this. I am five houses away from that house. Sidebar, she's outside of the two hundred foot list. I checked her address, which is why she didn't receive notice. I am five houses away from that house and under no circumstances should there be a school put in the middle of a residential area. This block has had multiple shootings, especially at that house. I find it awfully funny how many times we asked the landlord to evict the tenants because we were in fear of lives and he allowed them to live there. And now all of a sudden, he wants to place a school there and it's okay. Well, it's not okay with us. There are multiple accidents also because people race up and down this block. What will happen if a child will get seriously hurt? If a speeding car is barreling down the street and their ball just happened to roll out into the street? Don't put a school in the middle of a block. Also, the fact that I'm paying enough in taxes in this town and my child goes out of district to school, I'm not paying one extra dime of taxes for a school to go here. I cannot attend this online meeting or write to you in advance, which I think is B S to begin with because I'm an essential worker and will be at work and literally just found out about this meeting. If you would like to speak with me, you can reach me. Then she leaves her phone number and her address. Unfortunately, this email came in at, I think, about five o'clock tonight. I did not get it till just before the meeting. Otherwise, I may have reached out to her to answer any questions. She followed with a second email, also from Lori Zabowski. She says, also in reference to the above planning of them trying to put a school at the above address. If ten feet is required, why are you going to allow a two-point-six-foot building to be built there when the requirements clearly state ten feet away from the home that is next to you? If the place gone on fire, the houses next to it would go up in flames. Our existing insurance companies are not going to insure something like this when there are certain requirements. I work a lot of hours and I want peace and quiet. When I come home from work, I don't need a school that's going to be open seven days a week next to me or down the block for that matter. There are numerous places in Lakewood that they can put a school at, put it in the industrial park. There's numerous that are there now. Also, the poor little old lady that lives next door to this home does not have access to a computer to fight this school being put in. She knocked on my door. This is how I found out about it. She tried to call the number on the paper numerous times and left messages and no one called her back. If we wanted to live next to a school, we all would have moved there to begin with. Please do not allow this to happen. That's everything that I have in public comment.
And Ali, just to confirm, that lady who penned those emails is not within the two hundred foot radius of this property?
She left her address as fifty-one Erica, which is the town where I'm showing on the map here.
Okay.
I think it's two properties passing two hundred feet, which is why she wouldn't have gotten a notice.
Thank you.
Jillian, the only thing about having, leaving them out of here, meaning having a school here, the only good thing that's not going to be shooting to this house, that's a good thing. Did you get any emails, Mr. Jackson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Herzl, can you say that again?
Did you get any emails or, Mr. Jackson, regarding this application?
No, Mr. Herzl, the only emails that we've received were the ones that Ali just went over.
Okay, the only thing I want to add to what Ali read, I know that the the neighbors do not want a school there, but I think a school is legal in every zone. And our job in the plan would is just to make sure that it's safe, fences, gates, whatever we can do to make it safe. But not to have a school, to say we don't want a school in this area, that is not legal.
But Yehiel, you are giving a lot of variances here.
I'm not saying we should give the variances. I'm just to talk about that point that they don't want a school.
That's fine. And if there's a way, I just think it would be best before the next meeting or whenever they bring it back, if maybe the applicant would sit and meet with the, with the neighbors who have concerns and, you know, because I do think putting a school because I do think putting a school in over here would improve the neighborhood. I mean, if they're talking about, you know, having bad people living in this house now, putting in a school would definitely improve the neighborhood. It would not be open seven days a week. And it would be small kids, you know. Figuring out, had a fence in right is important. Circulation, well, everything's important, but it would benefit the neighborhood, I think.
And if it's elementary school from the one, two, and three, you're not going to have any kids there past 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And the neighbor was concerned about noise, she wants to have privacy. If it's elementary school, she'll never have that.
But the best idea is really to make them, you know, they're allowed to go there, but how do you make them comfortable? And it's putting up a white vinyl fence for privacy, something like that, or, you know. I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but it's probably some sort of a, something that would make them happy.
May I suggest something, Chairman?
Yes, sure. Terry?
I'm not sure if it's possible. I'm asking the applicant if it would be possible to correspond with the building department prior to the next meeting and find out what the occupancy of this building is per the proposed condition. I know the applicant wants 37 kids now and 57 kids next year. We haven't even talked about the number of teachers, et cetera. I think it would be good to find out, you know, what is the allowed occupancy of this building? We may be talking about a different application if they find out that it can only have 30 kids, 40 kids, 50 kids.
Okay. Terry, I think you.
Playing it out there.
I'm, yeah. I'm sure there's a standard. I'm sure there's a standard, how many kids you, how many square feet you need per kid. You can't just pack in as many as you want in a room.
You have to consider the number of teachers as well.
Right, I don't know the number. So we're missing. So Brian.
At the next meeting, we'll have those numbers.
You have, you hear the concerns of the board, you hear the concerns of the neighbors. Before next meeting, try to have full answers. And I would recommend that you try to reach out to those neighbors and what they would want makes for a good application. Okay?
Thank you.
Why don't we table this to Ellie?
I'm not sure if there's time to get a notice in the paper for the June 23 meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. I think Mr. Hattie said, yes, I think there's time if you send it to the paper tomorrow. So I would recommend you, June 23rd, which is two weeks from tonight. I don't think you need major plan revisions. I think you need to answer some questions. I'm not sure if that's enough time for you.
Yeah, it's enough time?
Okay, so I would recommend June 23rd.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I do think the new notice is required, though.
Yeah, I think Mr. Jackson told me that because it's a virtual meeting, I think everything has to be re-notice. Just because a lot of people don't have computers, they don't know, they don't hear when the next date is.
Right.
Exactly.
I would remind the board that the five of you who are here should try to be here on the 23rd for this application in particular. Otherwise, the applicant has to start their case over.
Okay.
Do these videos get posted to the website?
Yes.
So someone else could really watch it also?
That's true.
I'm not trying to excuse myself.
No, but you're right. I know the chairman is always looking to have as many members as we can so that we can get all of your wise input. So I will encourage the members who could not stay tonight to watch the video so that they can all be eligible to vote on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you very much. That, now I'm just going to, I'll probably talk for a couple of minutes.
I'll move it. It's Ellie.
Second.
And Dave's gone for second roll call. We have to, Ellie, we have to have one roll call today.
Okay.
Which is all firm.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
And Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Okay, approval of those?
I'll move it. It's Ellie.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave, second roll call?
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
And Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brian, I think he's off it. But the.
They left.
He left already. I just want to say, when you come with a school, we have a lot of unanswered questions. The applicant has to do his homework and come with these questions beforehand, not leave loose ends, and we have to try to figure it out.
I had a tech review letter. You can check that. Most of these were discussed already. The applicant knew about it. Look at the tech review letter.
Yeah, I was also, I was looking at the tech review letter. I mean, it's all discussed during the tech review and there's like no answers.
Yeah.
And just to ignore the Shade Tree Commission? I mean, come on, they didn't provide a plan. They requested a plan.
I think the Shade Tree comment came in April 28th, which is after they had submitted their revised comments, so their revised plan. So the Shade Tree comments came in very late.
Oh, so the Shade Tree is okay? Oh, you mean the comments that they don't have a plan?
The Shade Tree comment that they don't have a plan came in late? That's not unusual for a change of use because typically, they're not proposing the improvements when they do a change of use.
I mean, I'm just sticking up for Mr. Ratzek. I don't know what the Shade Tree Commission does, but I know he takes it.
Mr. Renner, I think that, we saw the map before, the Google map. I think that.
The app trees?
I think that's what it looks like to me. Ellie had it on before.
Okay.
Okay, everybody have a good night. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
You too, Mr. Herzl. Thank you.
We'd like to see you all.
I don't know, I like it like this.
You like this now?
I don't have to leave my office? Come on.
You know, I like it in person. Maybe we could all come to your office to have the meeting.
Plus that 150 feet.
Friends have been together.
The next meeting is in two weeks?
No, there is one next week as well. There's just no time to provide new notice for this application for that one.
Thank you.
Next week is the.
Next week is the 16th, and we will see you all then.
Yeah.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.